Okay, Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Good morning, welcome to the June sixteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Not permission comments.
Okay, well, I don't really have a whole lot. It was rather quiet over the weekend, which considered everything that went on last week was kind of nice, but did have my thirty year class reunion over the weekend. There's got a lot I could say on that, but I'm just gonna leave it alone. It was pretty good. We have both Friday, the Aggieville does the Business District does the whole basically MHS thing. I think there was people from fifty-five years or something was the the longest one that I've seen. And and then on Saturday, we kind of did our own thing over at tide separately. And then Saturday morning, we had a Zoom call that we set up for the loud classmates from all across the world, get together and connect with that thought was cool. And then they had a tour of the high school, which you haven't been here for a while. I'm surprised everybody surprised everybody. So it worked out pretty well. So overall, that went pretty well.
So fifty-five years, that's what they hold votes.
Yeah, I
Mine would be this summer.
You should have went, you should have. Well, if you'd been in Manhattan High, you shouldn't win. I guess you're Topeka High, so a little different, but yeah, the group kind of, as they typically do, is getting smaller and smaller, obviously, with just life and things that are going on and people that we continue to lose along the way. We've lost a couple others throughout the year or two. So but so, yeah, other than that, I didn't have anything else going on. It was pretty quiet over the weekend and got to say, I wasn't bothered by that. So that's all I got.
But now, since I wasn't here for comments last Thursday, I kind of backed up sort of early last week for comments. And Monday last week, they had the meeting, the county officials, I mentioned that you guys had covered that last time. Tuesday was Flint Hills Veterans Coalition, some work on Veterans Parade, but also working on the scholarships that they give out each year. And the latest report now is that R C B D will handle all the barricades now.
Oh.
So it's every month it's changed about what that's going to do. The city and the R C D are still juggling how they want to do that.
Debating that open consent thing or something. I have something to do with that.
And then Tuesday was Riley City Council and Wednesday was Randolph's. At both meetings, the changes in R C B D North Patrol were discussed. Sergeant Hagemeister will no longer be the supervisor and he's moving back to Manhattan. Lieutenant will now be the supervisor, but he'll be located in Manhattan most of the time, which this means North County has lost a full-time patrolman. They said
With gained animal control, so that's a victory for everybody.
Next year, when the SRO is only part-time at three seventy-three eighty-four districts, he will also be a part-time patrolman once in North County gets shorted. Going back to earlier director. Thursday before the commission meeting, I gave the welcoming remarks with Kansas County Treasurers Conference. That's why I was late arriving and but I didn't miss the exciting part. Saturday, again, I had a short speech for the Flag Day Ceremony at Manhattan City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
And for someone who absolutely hates public speaking twice, last week was really tough. Most of the last, rest of last weekend, this weekend was getting our house ready to put on the market.
Moving, huh?
Yeah, we bought a house in Manhattan. Stag Hill. A lot of reasons for it. That that would go ahead and start with her.
First item, move to authorize staff to move forward and authorize Public Works to contract with Purple Wave to conduct an internet-only option to sell surplus property. And again, the process to dispose of the surplus personal property and sign notice of intent.
Okay, go ahead, move authorized Public Works Department to begin the process of disposing of the surplus property through Purple Wave Inc. by public auction.
Second, been moved and seconded, authorize Public Works to begin the process of disposing the surplus property through a purple wave by public auction. All in favor?
Oh, yeah, I do need to sign for sure. It won't be official.
Next items, need a motion to approve the amendment number one for the biennial biennial bridge inspection services contract in the amount of two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars for the scour evaluation of the South Otter Creek Road project.
How did you pronounce that? Because I was wondering how to pronounce that. Is that scour?
Scour.
Okay.
So saying they're saying because it's about F G will make it easier. It won't be as required now.
Yeah, I believe that structure is on an annual inspection. So if we remove that plan of action, it'll go to every other year. I don't hear the structures.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward. Go ahead, make a motion that we approve the additional two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars for the scour evaluation.
I'll second, so moved and seconded to approve addition of two thousand four hundred and sixty-five scour evaluation. All in favor? This is not signature this time of day, I need to mention better now.
Next item is to approve the funding agreement and the M O U with N P O and State of Manhattan Board of County Ottawa County Commissioners for the Big Hoos.
This, both?
Is both.
Okay.
Both in M O U.
That's what you had discussed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we? Do we need to make a motion for both of them or just?
No, you guys already agreed in prior, prior.
By
Yeah, by consensus, just submit it for business.
Just the formality.
Yep.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion then to sign both the funding agreement and the memorandum of understanding as presented.
And I'll second, renewed and seconded, sign both the funding agreement and the memorandum of understanding as presented. All in favor?
I was gonna say that there, okay.
They go around on the district.
Okay, you have fun.
I sure will.
Thought everybody I said hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that's been a lot of work.
Yeah, take a few trips here to get this.
And the next item is to approve a tax rule correction.
There's no question that we'll make a motion to approve the tax rule corrections as presented.
Well, second, the mood and second to approve the tax rule corrections presented. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Just throw it at her.
Next item is to approve the minutes of the June twelfth meeting. There's any corrections?
I didn't have anything. I didn't see anything anyway. I am curious, just how many grammatical and spelling errors do you have to make with me? Well.
I don't know.
Okay.
You.
Well, some, okay, I was gonna say, sometimes I, I was gonna say, sometimes I read through it. I'm like, oh. Um, I don't do the best job of proofreading, I guess. Okay. I didn't see anything here, so we're good. But I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes as written from the June twelfth meeting of the Riley County Commission.
And I'll second, so moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June twelfth meeting as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any changes to the tentative or additions?
I don't think we need any additions.
First conference topics.
I was gonna ask, when are we gonna start back on the budget again?
On the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I was gonna plan by the twenty-third, but with that being Catherine's first day back, I wanted to waste.
Okay.
We'll catch up, catch your breath first.
Rather get the bad news early rather than later.
Next item, Shiloh at nine.
Okay.
Nothing we're perfectly We went at it all Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah. I
Getting everything always straight to go.
Yeah. That's a process, Michelle.
It's a process.
Rich, there's an update this morning. Is that the World War Two Memorial?
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it always looks nice when the fountains are working down at National Mall. So there is, I believe she's a candidate for the school board in Lansing. Wrote a pretty, pretty good letter to the editor on R H I Ds.
I love that.
Yeah.
We've got a meeting tomorrow. They're coordinating our move. The F C R C.
Yeah.
It's nobody knows what we're doing.
I'm wondering, do we need?
Because no one seems to know what's going on.
Yeah, because Cory's been working on the electronics part of it, the actual move and what we're doing and everything. Nobody's
Well, I talked to Cory about it late last week and I'm like, there's bits and pieces of my office. I'm gonna, if we're gonna, I mean, if we're gonna be gone that long, I'm gonna need, I'm wondering, maybe this isn't a good idea. I mean, I know, I know it needs to be done, but
That's why I wondered if we're still gonna have access to our
We're not. That's what Cory said. We're not gonna have access to.
Because I'm not gonna pack up everything in there.
Wasn't planning on it either, but I, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, if we're gonna be, the timeline is what's throwing me off, June to February. That's, that's throwing me way off. I, I thought it was gonna be like ninety days. And I, I get that they need some time and some space, but I'm thinking this isn't a good idea. That's just it.
They're storing stuff in here.
Right.
Yeah, when those get delivered, they'll be in all their tools and it's supposed this, well, we have to put a, on Xbox out here. It's not our, our
Right.
So they wouldn't have a place to put everything.
But they can't stage bits and pieces. I mean, they're doing it in phases. They can't stage bits and pieces of it up in the, what was the emergency management office?
No, that's, that's a moving office. Like when they're doing community corrections, they move into there. When they do council office, they move into there, you know.
I'm not fond of what's being proposed. I'm just gonna say it.
Yep. There'll be a mess.
Well, if I understood right, our offices won't be in the same building. They're gonna be in the opposite building, but we're gonna be parking in the new parking lot of the E M S. So we're basically, it's basically back to school for us.
So do you know where Josh?
Yes.
Yeah, that's one of them. And then whoever's maybe beside him is the other.
David, so they're
Yeah.
They're on the back.
That's on the west side of the, yeah.
Yeah, it's always to walk.
Yeah.
In the building.
Right.
Yeah. And then someone will be in that little kitchen. I don't know if you've been in that room you're going into.
Yeah.
But there's like glass. That's the other one.
Oh, okay.
Other office. We went there for a short mock meeting with civic clerk or with civic clerk last week and toured some of that. So, yeah, we thought about maybe a tour so you guys know where you're going.
And there, and there is an entrance back there, you know, the park, which is the E M S and there is a built like we have that map.
So you're parking there, going all the way to the other side if you need your office and then walking all the way back to the other side. I mean, yeah.
This F C R C is that lot of space. I can't believe they can't find two offices, two more offices over there. But they didn't start asking questions about details and nobody could give any answers. So we decided maybe we need another meeting.
Quite honestly. And you could move community corrections over there to that location, then you have the entire upper floor to store.
Yeah, then they all the way upstairs and then bringing them back down, take them outside.
Yeah, true. But you have to store all of them at once, though, if you're doing them in phases.
But all their tools.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, they're good. And I'm sure they will, well, I don't know, they'll get all the ones. And also they're not taking these.
No, we're just using tables.
Tables over there. Meet tomorrow, probably get all that work details. Morning.
No, no crowds.
Yeah. It's, it's quiet.
Conference all go well?
It went excellent. Yeah.
A lot of people there.
This is, this is one of our highest, we, highest attended one that, that we've had in a while. Now, we have a lot of brand-new treasures. We have, I think we have thirty
Oh, wow.
Thirty-one treasures retiring, so.
It's like almost a third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there were a lot of new treasures there this time and and everybody likes to come to me.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, yeah.
So
I've noticed all the associations have been meeting here a lot the last couple of years.
Yeah, so next summer is gonna be here as well. They've decided they want to have it.
Good.
So.
Good. I'd like to get
Basically, considering, I don't know how many counties were there, so there's just one treasure and there's three, five county commissioners. Commissioners meeting didn't have all that many core people in there. Because our county commissioner was pretty smart.
It really was. I was kind of disappointed in that.
And it was here too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's over at the convention thing.
Yeah.
I'd like to get our state association meeting over there, but we've got an expo. I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All in equipment.
Yeah. Guess you could put it outdoors in middle of October and keep your fingers crossed. When the wind doesn't blow, which we know is not gonna happen. Until the weather will hold up. But I thought you could maybe move the expo down to the armory down there and just get shuttles, you know, back and forth and do the same.
You mean like for K A C?
Yeah.
Okay.
We definitely have enough space to do the whole thing, but I mean, the expo, that's the only
Yeah. Cindy, I do need to change my July staff time too, because I won't be here the second first day. I probably need to just change mine away from this. I seem like I've always gone the second week.
Where's Catherine today?
Using her daughter.
Oh, nice.
Virginia.
Nice.
Yeah, she and Richard both in the D C area.
Oh, okay.
And Richard picture, he's, he was at the World War Two Memorial.
Oh, nice.
It says for first time there, believe it or not, really. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Surprises everybody, I know.
Are you ready to be out in your new location for?
We were just talking about it.
We gotta be tomorrow because it's not coordinated yet.
Oh.
We just figured this out that there's been a lot of talk, but no specific shit.
No.
Not a lot, not enough specific. Gonna have another meeting.
I'm gonna be happy to get new windows in here. Don't get me wrong, but
Sure.
Good to see some progress here, but
Are you, are you going, are you going to N A C O?
No.
You're not going.
No. I usually don't go to the national meeting.
Okay.
It's just I mean, it's too expensive to do both.
Yeah, I can understand that. That's why we stopped doing the legislative one, because we just, we couldn't get the attendance to that one. And you just lost money trying to
I usually go to the legislative one because I can match up meetings with the federal delegation. So it's two birds, one stone.
Sure.
Maybe Philadelphia would be, would be pretty cool to go to. Just check out, you know. I went that first year when we were in Vegas. I won't talk about it because I'm, you know, I'm not supposed to.
It's like I got, got to get this on. Well, it's from somewhere.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, we gotta pause.
Getting closer. There you go.
Usually Rich does this for me.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner Shiloh Hager, Riley County Treasurer with the May Revenue Reports. So the month of May, we ended up with a balance in the general fund of seventeen million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, three thirty-four. We did do the, the June distribution was, so that is why that number is, is higher than it was last month. Currently in the ARPA account, four million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty. We had an ending balance of a hundred and sixteen million, eight eighty-nine to twenty-one thirty-nine. You can see here, thirty-five million of that are funds that were distributed on June, June fifth to the other taxing entities. Our investment income through the end of May, net interest to the general fund is eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, four thirty-five, ten, which is about forty percent of the two point one million that we have.
Which is about forty percent of the two point one million that we have budgeted for this calendar year. You can see that our in our. Interest rate on the checking account is still sitting at four point four two percent. Our highest CD bid for the month was four point one seven, and I will tell you that we are still getting probably three or four banks that are. Bidding every time we, um, we put a bid out for, um, for our funds. Revenue for the general fund. Was ten million, fifty-nine thousand, four forty-one before any transfers in. You can see here that sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars was transferred into the general fund. That was the ending balance that was in the motor vehicle operating fund, which statutorily. I transferred that into the general fund by May thirty-first, so. That is what that number is. You can see here, though, for the month, what we had budgeted for the month, we're about, just about seven percent below what was budgeted for the month. And year to date through May, we're just under about half a percent lower than what was budgeted for, um, year to date through. May, you can see here when we did our, our distribution. Motor vehicle came in a little bit higher. Commercial came in a little bit lower, but that's just prob, that's just a timing issue here. You can see here that we were a little bit lower, um, for our ad valorem taxes, what we had budgeted. But you also do have to remember that we did have to make a pretty large refund back to the city, so for those. The, the two rec centers, so, um, when we made. Those kind of decreased what our distributions were this time, so, um, not saying that that made up all of it, obviously. The way the, um, the twelfth fell on, or the tenth fell on a Saturday, so. Taxes were due on the twelfth. In order to get the distribution done, we had to cut off about the fifteenth. So we still have quite a few taxes still coming in after that fifteenth date, so. I suspect our September distribution is gonna be, um, we'll try to make up, make up that difference. And then if you look for our total, what we've budgeted for revenues. You can see here that we've collected seventy-nine point three seven percent of total budgeted revenues, so. So that's. It's not a hundred percent, obviously, because we'll still have, you know, some pretty big ticket items, you know, so well, sales tax throughout the year, interest throughout the year. But and, and then obviously we'll have more delinquent taxes coming in. I will, I will say. Our new credit card, our new credit card system that we now use that are online, where you can make your payments online. It calculates the interest every day, and we are seeing a huge uptick in how many people. That are paying their delinquent taxes are using our online, cause and they're paying the interest. Typically, if before they would have to either call us and get the amount, or they would just. Send us a check for the taxes and we'd have to send them a letter to get the interest. We're seeing a huge number of people using, um, our online payment system and paying the tax that is actually currently due, so. I'm very pleased with, with that, how that program is working. Sales tax, you can see, um, the part that we get to retain, um, a hundred and ninety thousand, four eighty-three, fifty-seven. Which is one point one five percent higher than last year and three point nine percent over what, um, we budgeted for the month. I was very happy to see that, cause you could see the last two months, we were a little under what we had budgeted. And year to date, we've collected forty-two point oh three percent, which is right. Through, um, through May is forty, forty-one percent, so we're just right on budget for what we've budgeted for the general fund. And then road and bridge, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven eighty-one, about five percent higher than May of last year and. Almost thirty-six percent over what we had budgeted for the month. We've collected about fifty-four percent of the two million that we budgeted for road and bridge. And then you can see here, year to date, we are about two point seven one percent higher than. Where we're in May of twenty-four, and this is total sales tax, um, collected. And this just shows you the distribution between our, the various types of sales tax, not anything earth shattering there. And then our distribution to how, how that sales tax that comes in of that seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, how it's distributed between the small cities and the county. Any questions on any of that? No? Okay. Um, like I said, we did make our third tax distribution on June fifth. We mailed out delinquent notices on Friday, June sixth. This Friday, we will be sending out, um, any personal property that was not paid, we have to send out sheriff's warrants, so those will go out this Friday. I did, I, like you said, I did with ACTA conference last week that was here in Manhattan, and I just wanted to give a public. Just say how proud I am that I work for Riley County. Um, three of our speakers. On Thursday were from Riley County. We had Lori Harrison from Emergency Management. She did her presentation on preparedness and it was very well received. She did an excellent job. Elizabeth Ward did a, um, did a presentation for us on DISC, the DISC model, and how to make sure you have the right people in your, in your boat to. You know, to get your job done. Um, that was also very well received. I had one treasurer say usually. It, it's hard to keep my attention on a Thursday afternoon, and she said I was, she said I didn't fall asleep once. And then Melanie Highsmith from, um, the museum did a Kansas trivia contest for, for us, which. Presented right after lunch and kept, got everybody up moving and.
Got them from going to taking a nap.
Exactly. But, but very, they all represented Riley County very well, and I was just very proud that I worked for this organization and they were able to do such a good job. And of course. Commissioner McKinley did a fabulous job with welcoming us to Riley County. Considering what he had to face earlier or later on in the day, he, uh, I was.
A lot of friendly crowd.
I was, I was very.
Worried, we were like, hmm, where did he go? You gotta go up to Riley and drag him out of the house?
No, but, um, I really appreciate you coming, um, as well, Commissioner. So, uh, the next thing on my agenda is I will be attending NACFO in July, where I will be installed as the National. Association of County Factors, Treasurers and Finance Officer President. I will, um, so I will come back as the president of the National Association, so.
I'll make sure to crash that party in February in DC.
All right, I'm, so I'm definitely looking forward to that. It's been, it's been a lot of work, um, and we have excellent. Excellent certification at this conference, so I'm hoping to bring back some great ideas as always, and, uh. So, yeah, so that's, that's what's going on in the treasurer's office, so if you have any questions or. And you, you were able to get your tags renewed last month, easy peasy.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Five minutes.
Five minutes in and out.
I was, I, I, I will mention one thing, and I think I mentioned it, but I was really surprised by how many people were in the office at seven thirty, so obviously that, that change was for the best.
Oh, definitely. Um, we, it's very rare that we don't have.
Oh.
People waiting in.
Yeah. Fellow coworker might have mentioned that too, that he had to come in before work. Seven thirty-two was appreciative of that, so, yeah, it is working.
Well, great, I appreciate that. Well, as always, if there's anything I can do for you, my door's always open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Follow that, David.
I'd just be happy if I found your phone.
Your what?
My phone.
Oh, I thought you said boom. I'm like, that's not a good thing to lose.
Vehicle, my office were on the construction site, cause sometimes I set it down.
It's on the construction site, you might be in trouble.
It's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of the, I'm, it's someplace that I've been this morning.
Yeah. I was saying, I should call it, but that's not gonna do any good here.
I like coffee cups, huh?
Absolutely.
Where did I leave my cup? Yep, everybody just drinks half a cup and then it's left sitting somewhere at the end of the day. The bad part of that, though, at EMS, like my coffee cup has my name on it, cause it's old from one years ago, when the department candidate gave them out. And so if I leave my coffee cup around, I hear about it, cause they know whose it is, so I. I'll come in the next morning and, where's my coffee cup? Wherever you left it, cause apparently it wasn't in the dishwasher. So I have to go find my coffee cup and put it in there, so. They don't let me get away with anything.
Yeah, my, my grandson was talking about the new building, so, cause he works with VHS.
Okay.
But they, then they pulled in extra people Saturday.
They did.
Final cleaning. He was in, he was in that crowd.
Was he? Was that Gabe?
Gabe.
Okay, yeah. I met him a couple of weeks ago, uh, at the golf course.
Oh, at, at their tournament, their.
Uh, no, I played, played with Clint Castor. We were walking out and, and, uh.
Yeah.
Wade and Gabe were there, so.
Yeah.
So we chatted with them for quite a while. Yeah, they, they had, so the last two Saturdays, I've been there for eight hours. Getting stuff done, and so there. There's, uh, quite a few people there again today, outside. Blueville's working pretty hard, Schilling is there working hard. VHS obviously has some people, IT has people in there, so.
Yeah, Blue Will's commenting, but, you know, they always get, everything's done, but you guys, can you do this in the day?
Yeah. In the middle of June, you know. I was noticing even over there at the Edge District, I think they gave up on the idea of putting grass in now, probably till. September.
Right.
It's kind of hard to even get sod laid in this time of the year without it burning up.
Water.
And unfortunately, and I don't completely understand it, so I could be wrong, um, but you know, part of the, the op, or. For us to take occupancy, there has to be, the landscaping has to be in.
No.
So. That means everything or what? But I know they're, they're planting plants now and, and putting the edging and such in, but. So I don't know if they have to put sod down for us to get in. I don't know, it's.
I wouldn't think so, but.
I wouldn't either, but I don't know. But I'm learning a lot. I filled out last night and I filled out the, the app permit application for the fire alarms.
To get your mailbox?
No, I think we're gonna take the one off the old building and just move it over, so. But, um, we went and looked the other day and weren't finding what we were looking for, so, and we can't just go out there to. You know, take one off the assembly line, I wouldn't assume.
We've got some in stock.
Do you really? Could, so you can go out there and buy them?
Wow. It's kind of odd. You can go out there and check, but you're gonna have to go through a third party to come back through to get it if that makes sense.
Kind of.
Yeah, but you could do that, but it'll, it'll come from us.
Right.
Yeah. And it would be. Delivered and installed by a separate company, but it's contracted through us. It's a weird process, I know, but.
We may just take one off our building.
But if you need something more sophisticated, definitely let me know. I'll get you, I'll get you the right people.
Absolutely.
It's not a, it doesn't take months on end, it's just.
Sure.
Gotta go through a couple of different middlemen, I guess, of sorts.
All right, good morning Commissioners, David Adams with my, I'm, I'm a same district director with my monthly update. Kind of quickly going through this, cause I actually have a separate item too, to discuss real quick, cause I'm sure you. I was going to, I put it in here and then, uh, kind of dawned on me, I could do it through the business meeting, but then I forgot to change it, so here we are. So, uh, month of May, we had four hundred and thirty-eight calls for service. It was a little bit busier month.
Graduation.
Graduation and just the weather was nice enough that people were out more often. You know, we had, we had people who hurt themselves or had, had difficulty working in the yard and doing things like that, so. But yeah, when it's that weather is, that's that perfect weather, you know, kind of like what we see in late September to mid-October. Where it's just so nice, you have to be outside, so. But a hundred and seventy-seven at, at Station One, a hundred and thirty-four at two, thirty-one being Public Works is twenty-four. We're bringing them down to kind of help staffing with, uh, at Station One. Because Station One's had to pick up some of their call volume because of the, the construction, so, um, so. Bringing them down to get them more involved, help out. Forty-eight calls from the airport and then twenty-four at Leonardville, so. But, uh, our, our out of town transfers were down for a couple of months, and now they're starting to pick back up, and so, uh, I've noticed. Uptick in those in just the last ten days or so. We did our active violence, it went very, very well. Really proud of the staff. It was completely different, something we'd never, in scenarios that they had never done before. And it's always interesting between law enforcement, Manhattan Fire and EMS, how they, they, they. They have to do a lot of figuring it out, you know, and it's kind of chaotic and, and, uh, so they're. They, they did a good, they do a good job. Obviously, there's things we learn, right?
Had a lot of press out on this one during and afterwards too, which they typically don't do.
Yeah.
Which I, I understand why, but.
Right. Well, and part of it for like us was it also coincided with National EMS Week.
Oh, true.
That, that was part of it, so we didn't really focus too much on the EMS Week, because we had that active training going right, right through there, so that, that was part of it. But, uh, but they did really well, but it, it, it's interesting to watch them, because you can see the, the wheels are spinning in all three organizations, you know, and, uh. They learned a lot, yeah, but, uh, very, very proud.
Other agencies involved in that though too, right?
Uh, the primary is, is Manhattan Fire, RCPD and Riley County MS. Emergency Management has, can have some roles depending on what's going on.
School district.
Uh, the school district, um, I mean, we're on their property.
Right.
But, uh, but yeah, it's, it's mainly from first responder standpoint, it's those three agencies. So. Um, obviously, new building construction topics, we're about done with that. Uh, you notice in your packet, you don't have the, the weekly updates from Sheldon, cause those have, those have concluded. Josh and Alex are working on their quality improvement safety course. I'm wait, waiting to see the end result of that in their final project that they're doing. Uh, but as some of this goes off, we're gonna have some new, new initiatives coming on that you'll see here in the next month or two, so. Uh, especially now that we're into a building and we can, we can work together side by side. Still participating in the work groups and task forces for mental health and substance misuse. Still getting out, trying to, uh, observe the staff's field performance and find areas that they're doing very, very well. Areas for improvement and, and then noting things that are just kind of something we don't see very often and sharing that information with our staff, so. We had no event standbys, um, so that doesn't happen very often. But, uh, I think we'll have another month of pretty low event standbys, and then we'll start ramping back up here in, in August. Education, so Via Christi reached out to us via our medical director, who's an ER physician for Via Christi. About some, uh. The cardiac response guidelines between EMS, the hospital, and then Stormont Vale, or I'm sorry, uh, St. Francis Hospital, KU in Topeka. That's where they send most of their cardiac patients is, is there. Um, the timeline, the, the cardiologist. At KU Topeka would like to see a little. Closer timeline from the time of our seeing the patient till the time that they arrive in Stormont Vale. So, cause it, these are called time sensitive or time critical conditions. So there are things we're doing on our end. We used to, well, we have the capability of doing a cardiac monitor. We'll come, you know, four leads or twelve leads, and then sending that via the wifi to the hospital. We have that capability. Neither entity really used it too much, because they still wanted to do their own when we get there. But, uh, uh, the hospital's putting in the capability to receive those now in a more timely fashion. So that they, they, they trust ours, they don't, usually you don't trust but verify. So they trust us, that shorten that timeframe, and then the hospital is gonna change some of their paperwork to kind of condense that. Stormont Vale isn't, are going to guarantee a bed, um, for these patients and not have to wait for a bed assignment. So that's, that's coming down. We're working through that now. We're gonna have to do some training on our staff to remember how to do all of this, just like. Via Christi is gonna have to do some training with their staff on how to do this as well, so. But that, uh, that's gonna ramp up, I, I think here in, in, uh, July. But, uh, that, that's something you'll see more of as well. Everything else is just continuing, um, and then community outreach, we just, we had car seat check lanes. Lieutenant Fry, who was one of our head car seat technicians, went through the training again. Lieutenant Fry, who was one of our head car seat technicians, went through the training again. You have to recertify every, every couple of years, so. So any questions on that? There's a breakdown of our stats. Nothing, you know, you can tell the students were enjoying themselves, I think, Friday and Saturday. They were, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they were a little bit more out and about, I think. So and then you can see that in, in some of that call volume, late afternoon into the night. We were, we were staying, staying fairly busy till, till o'clock in the morning. Breakdown falls eighty four. Calls where that was a primary dispositions. Sick person breathing, none. We still have the, the one or two people that we have to, we see once or twice a day to help, help, help with some of their life, life movements. And then transfers were back on there, but they were lower than typical, so. And then the the update from, from Sheldon. So. Everything is finished, finished, you know, touch up, finish, so. But they're, they're coming along, it's we're starting to move in some of our things, our bed frames are in, some of the stuff in the bedrooms are in. The TVs are, and, and monitors are going on the walls as we speak. So our desks are in, they were put in last week, so. You, so when, when we do the ribbon cutting here a week, you'll see a fairly complete station, so not, not one hundred percent because we can't, can't do all that we would like to do, but it'll be, you'll get a good feel for it.
For landscaping.
Landscaping is what they're doing now. Yeah, thank you, so. But yes, so. Any questions about, on any of that? Okay. So the next item I have is, this, this comes every year. Potawatomi County asked to borrow one of our UTVs, our patient haulers for their Fourth of July celebration. They don't, I think they may have one, but they don't have multiple, and this is such a big event. But every year they pick it up, when they bring it back, it's, it's clean, full of fuel, in good working order, and they bring it back right where, right where they picked it up, so. But July third to the fifth. So. There's no, no cost to us, so it, you know, they take care of everything and it's serviced in, you it serviced last year about halfway through football season, so it's fine, and then it'll get serviced again before we start football season by the shops as they always do. So my recommendation that, you know, we deploy that resource to Potawatomi County as requested.
I don't have any issues with it. I've seen that in action out there a couple of times, so.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it gets, it gets used. Absolutely.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the request from the Potawatomi County EMS to use a Rhode County EMS, a UTV patient hauler from July third to July fifth for the Fourth of July fireworks celebration in Lomigo.
And I'll second, I'm moving second to approve the request from Potawatomi County to use the Rhode County EMS UTV patient hauler on July third, fifth, for the Fourth of July fireworks celebration, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
See you on Monday.
Now, that.
I think you should have to follow me.
Except for the press conference is on the list.
Jacob, are you going to come see us this month?
What? Oh, yeah, I need to. The thing you reminded me of. Now I'm sitting on my desk at home. I just schedule, schedule, I can just do all that online, right? Schedule a time to come in or do anything.
Oh, yeah, you can set a time for me, yeah.
Yep, that time of year.
My daughter just moved to Wichita and so I reminded her that renewing in Sedgwick County is a lot different than renewing in Riley County and not to wait till the last minute. Mom is not doing it for you.
Yeah, that probably isn't helping. Do I get, so when, when I go in and do that, obviously I get the twenty twenty six sticker, but the RL, I'll get an RL sticker too, or do I get it? Is there an option for me to just get the new license plate? Because I got the whole blue on.
Raise letters or black letters?
I don't think it's, I don't think, I think it's raised.
Then, then you will automatically get the new plate, but you should have gotten that last year if you were eligible.
Yeah, you know what, now maybe.
And C and H is, we, they were still doing the blue plate and not the new one, but if you want the new one, we can just give you cents.
I think it looks cool. I like the blue. It actually looks like something. Like with the blue, it's just like, kind of looking at like, what, what's going on?
Yes, kind of.
Nine thirty, seems we have something on the press office.
Yes, Tara, do you want to? Should I introduce her? I don't, we don't have a script.
Oh, I think we know her.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director, and I'm just here to introduce Tara Clausen from the United Way, who has a recognition to give to the United Way committee for our last year's participation and for sure, for sure. Thank you for having me this morning. I am happy to be here just for a few minutes, but we're very appreciative and thankful for the support from the team and all of the employees within Riley County workforce. We have a small certificate. We'd like to recognize the group as one of our top ten workplace campaigns in the last campaign year. And I know with the effort of the team that came together with some creative new ways to engage staff and have them participate and learn a little bit more about community needs and what we're all doing together. There was success and, and growth in the outcomes of the campaign, so we're super excited about that. We know recent years have been a little bit challenging for, for many citizens, not only just in our community specifically, but across the country, and so when United Way can show growth in our campaigns and it is reflective of our community citizens who are giving their precious dollars to make that success happen, we're super grateful. This past year, a few things that, the dollars that came through the campaign and the success that came from that is our efforts support the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We know that early childhood literacy is so important to helping success in school, stopping maybe some negative trends that we don't want to see in some of our up and coming youth, and so having the Dolly Parton Imagination Library helps build some of those reading skills so that there's success early. And this year we have mailed over a hundred thousand books in our first three years of having the program, and so dollars that come through our workplace campaign make that happen. We're super grateful for that. We also, through our work with our partners and very targeted programming and initiatives to meet the needs of our community so that members, so that we can uplift them. We served over sixteen thousand people with campaign dollars invested back into the community, so. We just wanted a few minutes to say thank you. We especially want to recognize the team that came together, and again, I know last year was a lot of new creative games and activities and just ways to engage staff, and I think that's so very important and, and just shows the support from leadership is critical. And we just are proud to be a part and work alongside of you and, and want to say thank you, so. So I, so you guys want to come up here? Yeah. So internally, the two, the two folks who did all of the heavy lifting, all of the work are Sherry and Amy, and so they're really the, the leadership here for last year's success, so we have a certificate for them to take a photo, hopefully with the Commissioners. But also it really belongs to all the employees who came together to support our community last year, so.
I'm just happy with the way all the employees came together and we had a really fun time over the month doing the different things that we did from flamingos to department head baby pictures and a bake sale that everybody really participated well in and brought some delicious stuff, so it was great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Big group picture, do you want to do everybody? Can I have Grace and Jordan come be in? They're kind of the behind the scenes. Jordan is a student at P State who's helping us in internship and learn, so. And Grace is new to our team, so. Perfect. Thank you so much.
That'll be easy to remember.
Lost is so great.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Hanson, Riley County Councilor. I'm going to go a little bit in reverse order to spare Mr. Stukey from having to listen to the entirety of my speech. So we'll, we'll start with the resolution controlling the sale and use of fireworks in Riley County. Kansas, outside the corporate limits of any county. This is just an update, of course. As I mentioned in my administrative session last week, it's the resolution we had in place. Instead of just amending the resolution, we just started fresh and we're just going to put in a whole resolution in place of it, and really the only changes, of course, are expanding the dates to June twenty eighth through July fourth for the sale and discharge of fireworks. And then we had, of course, the update to include a prohibition on lantern style fireworks. And then, of course, we are increasing the seasonal fireworks sales county license fee to two one hundred dollars, up from twenty five. Of course, that original resolution was put in place in, I believe, around the seventy, yeah, seventy eight. So inflation adjusted, I think the county individuals are still coming on top as far as the fee is concerned. Any other questions as far as the resolution and the purpose?
The sky lanterns and flying, that was already in there, I see.
No, no, so, no, no, it was not. That was an addition that we made on, on suggestion of Mr. Stukey.
So a lot of, a lot of the other counties and stuff have those in there and and we, my staff was like, hey, we really ought to put that in there. I'm like, yeah, that's probably a good idea, and for those that aren't familiar, they're the the lanterns that you light and they kind of act like a hot air balloon. And then they just go up and up in the air with an open flame and then they drift. Depending on the wind conditions, they can drift miles and miles and miles.
Land in a seed or something.
And or, yeah, a, a dry grass pasture, who knows what. You could light them off in a nice wet area, but by the time they land, it could be someplace that hadn't had rain for weeks, so. We just thought we, we, that would be a prudent thing to do and obviously the right time to do it. I think we shouldn't agree.
I see, I've seen we already had, you know, I haven't seen the resolution, but I know that's, like you said, I've heard a lot of people putting an end to those things because they are dangerous.
Right, right. Yeah, currently the, the seventy eight resolution really only references the prohibition on like ball rockets and things of that nature. And of course, you got to have the legal definition, which it tries to cover everything under the sun that could be related to a bottle rocket. That's what we did here with the lanterns.
Then I would just ask for a motion from the board on that to, so we can have that resolution executed.
Get it, you made it.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, I'm going to have to rethink my ideas on fireworks. Anyway. I'm also trying to pull it up while I'm talking here. That's not working real well.
If you want, I gotta.
Well, actually, I've got it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move the board to execute the resolution controlling the sale and use of fireworks in Rhode County, Kansas, outside the corporate limits of any city as presented.
Second.
I'm moving second, the board executes the resolution controlling sale and use of fireworks in Riley County, Kansas, outside corporate limits of any city as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Of course, next I have pending projects. Just, of course, an outline. It's been a little, it's been some, as we've gone through this. And the way that it's divided, of course, is we have just kind of our ongoing tasks, the things that just come up very regularly and we advise and assist usually on a daily or if not daily, weekly basis. And then here's just kind of a short list. Short list of, of some of the projects that I've either been working on or have just recently brought to completion. I can go through these individually if you want, or if you have any questions on any specific one of those projects, I'm happy to provide an answer as much as I can, of course, without going overboard on attorney client communication. Is there any, any, any particular issues that, that stand out? I should mention, actually, while I'm here, is that I didn't have that court hearing on that nuisance payment case this morning. That went well. We're, we're taking another step forward. We're gonna, we've had the amended complaint filed, and so now the defendant will need to take, it will be taking a month to then enter a plea. And so once we enter the plea, we're going to go through the discovery process, which will be really short because we only, I mean, we have everything that we have and it's, it doesn't have to be all that extensive. So things are moving well in that case. And as far as any other potential issues regarding any sort of like flow coming out of that property, I've spoke with defendant's counsel and it looks at least positive that hopefully we'll be able to see some resolution to that fairly quickly. But I just wanted to bring you up to date on. But I just wanted to bring you up today on.
Everything moving okay with outside legal?
Yeah, uh, so, so, uh, so far, um, I was, we're working on sending him an email this morning, of course. Uh, getting him up to speed on certain larger uh, projects uh, is my first and main goal, so we're just trying to now facilitate the transfer of all. The documents we have over, but otherwise than that, I've had good communication so far upfront, and we're just kind of in that process of transferring documents, so everything's going well. It's been positive. Uh, any other questions, at least regarding uh, current projects? Okay, uh, the last thing I did want to bring up for you guys is, of course, we have our tax bill coming up. Um, and that's for for the public's interest too, and I got a little bit of some statistical information, and if you want copies, I can. Surely give them to you, but um, I'll just kind of go through some of the numbers that we have. Um, I, this is not, uh, I did not include this, I don't believe this got included on the. The list here, but let me double check. Nope, okay. So let me, I'll just go through some of the statistics, so we have a, uh, as of June sixteen, twenty twenty-five, we got a total amount of properties of eighty. Um, we have zero how owner occupied houses, we have one rental house included. Uh, we've got three vacant or abandoned houses. Um, and Ogden, of course, we have plenty of vacant residential units there. Um, sixty-three total lots, but we've kind of grouped them all into nine. Um, and those are in each nine lots, I think, is a total of six. So in the Manhattan area, we got uh, seven vacant residential lots. Uh, and in the unincorporated area, we have uh, with no land improvements, we have a total of five there as well. So general taxes that we're looking at here are about a hundred and twelve thousand, specials are around four hundred and seven thousand. Uh, and the interest included is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, so the total outstanding as of January seventeen, twenty twenty-five. As far as delinquent taxes is six hundred and fifty-nine thousand uh, and fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Since we've started this pro- uh, process, uh, and since filing a petition, we've so far received fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. So we were, we're picking up a little bit, uh, hopefully, you know, we get some good uh, amount of taxes out of the sale of the property, we've. There have been some properties that we've negotiated with, um, that have sold and that will be selling here very shortly, and each one of those properties. I think have like anywhere between fifty and sixty thousand in back taxes, so we'll be getting, we'll be getting that finally. So that'll be good. Um, and then so far, we have seventy-one registered bidders. And so registration for uh, to to participate is better closes on June twentieth, twenty twenty-five at five P. Yep, and just a reminder to anybody that's interested, that's listening. Uh, just a reminder that Tuttle Creek Boulevard is closed through traffic between the dam and the Public Works Building. So plan your route ahead of time and the auction starts at ten AM sharp, so keep that in mind. And would you guys like, like a copy of the stats? Okay, all right, that's all I have for you.
I guess that's it for this one. Guess you've got another one later.
Sit steady some more.
Kind of used to this nine forty-five thing here. And we, and we're not meeting on Thursday. Anticipates next week, I'm probably, lots of stuff. Okay, well, I guess then, if there's nothing else, I. I'll uh, make a motion to adjourn the June sixteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission.
Second, it's renewed and seconded to adjourn the June sixteenth meeting with Riley County Commissioners, so.